Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This agenda, this agenda and this meeting of the State and City Council is now in session. Would all of a like mind please join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our staff is here. We have an addition of Mr. Wallace Lean, who is our Land Use Council, and he's joining us this evening. The present council is all present, and I guess we'll get after it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Well, I have one, but it's noted on there, and that'll be later in the meeting. Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, et cetera.
None, Your Honor.
No? None? 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 Okay. Then we'll go with presentations and comments from the public. Mr. Abud, you want to start?
I just filled out the speak at the public hearing.
At the hearing? Or at the...
The public hearing.
Public hearing, okay. Jerry Flowers, did you want to speak now under comments?
Can I submit? For the record?
Uh, that's what it says.
Right. I didn't know what I was going to say.
Submitted. Jerry Flowers.
Yes, can I do it during the hearing?
Yes. And Colton Bradley, would you like to wait till the hearing on that piece of property?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Anyone else? Need to say something under comments from the public? All right, well, let's go to the consent agenda then. From November 20th, City Council minutes and an acceptance of abstract of election results, November 7.
Mayor, I move we approve both houses.
Okay. Have a motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. And now, then we get to something of substance, which is a public hearing on a minor modification application. All right, I have to read this thing before we can do this, so hold on for a couple of minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't believe we voted on the consent agenda.
Didn't we?
We didn't, but we have a motion and a second.
Well, let's vote then. Have a motion and a second to approve it as issued or as submitted. All in favor, please?
Aye.
All right. Same sign? Okay, motion passed. Thank you. I always need help, so it's appreciated.
Takes a village.
Okay, a script to be read at commencement of public hearings. Good evening, my name's Henry Porter, and as mayor, I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number 9-09/17, an application for minor modification to a previously approved site for the property located at 2550 Martin Drive. The property is Zone Commercial General. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that cover certain matters relative to this case. That statement with all the information required to be presented under the Oregon Revised Statutes number 197.763 bracket 5 is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes your turn to speak. Also during the back, at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The city council's rules a procedure for land use public hearings and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. I don't hear any. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider it? None? I hear none, and are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact or bias by any members of this body? I don't hear any. We're not ready for the staff introduction. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This public hearing is on a call-up of a staff decision that was rendered on a minor modification. The property is located at the southwest corner of Martin Drive and North Third Avenue. The site plan was originally approved about four years ago in 2013, and the changes that are proposed by this application, when they were submitted, I deemed qualified as a minor modification. My order, as such, it was a minor modification is typically a staff decision without a public hearing. The neighboring property owners are notified and given the opportunity to comment. When I sent out the notice of decision to the applicant, those neighbors who did comment, the planning commission and the city council, as is required by code, the decision was called up by one of the counselors. The council assumed jurisdiction at your early November meeting, I don't recall the date, but, and tonight's scheduled public hearing was set. So I will, after the applicant's presentation, return and go through the staff report and the recommended order that staff has recommended to you.
Let's, that's it for now, Dan?
That's it for the introduction, yes.
All right, staff introduction. Applicant presentation. Would the people who... That would be you? Please.
Hi, I'm Heidi Shamblin, I'm the owner of the Sunshine Coffee Company. I'm not sure exactly what to say other than we have done the best, to the best of our ability and our knowledge, followed what was supposed to be done as far as the minor modification, and I feel that the planning department, that their decision was just as far as the parking issues, you know, we can certainly make modifications to that if that's necessary, and I believe that there was some issue with the traffic, the number of cars, and the great thing about it being a mobile unit is that we can move it in order to accommodate those, the number of vehicles that need to be able to pull through there. As far as the city code stating that there, you cannot have a drive-through window facing a street, I'm not sure what the purpose is of that, but we can obviously not use that one window, there are many drive-throughs that only have one window, and I'm fine with I think the other issue was handicap parking, and we have a sign, we can put it up, we've got pavers that are already there that can be used as parking if that's needed. You know, we've, I've tried to go through everything and I'm, you know, we just want to get our business open and have a chance to save up some money to do whatever modifications need to be done, and we're just trying to improve the community, and I certainly think that we've done that already, even though we're not open yet, if anybody has driven by the lot now, that it, that our unit is there and things have been maintained, I'd say it looks 100 times better than it did four, five months ago, whenever it was that we started this. And obviously, as we go along in our business and the weather gets better, we'd love to do more to make it look nice, and, I mean, our purpose is to give back to the community and to be part of it, and that's what we're trying to do, so, I'm not really sure what else to say, but I can answer questions as they come up, I guess.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay, Dan, let's go back to staff report.
Okay. So you've got in your packet a written memorandum, there's a number of, there's some written submissions that were submitted by both the applicant, as well as some neighboring property owners, and a draft order of approval with conditions. As I mentioned in my introduction, this site received site plan approval in 2013, and actually prior to that, there were several site plan approvals issued by the planning commission for developments that never got built, for whatever reasons, but in 2013, I received an application for site plan approval for a seasonal produce sales area. That site plan showed pavers to be put down for where the sales area was going to be, a small gravel parking area, and a handicap area that was going to be pavers. Also, it included landscaping, a stormwater, rain garden area, et cetera. That site plan was approved by staff because the code allows staff to approve site plan approvals that are under a certain size of development area. When the development was put in, they did not follow the approved site plan. Following an enforcement letter, they submitted a revised plan that reflected what they actually put on the face of the earth. There were some additional condition of approval that were met. The business was there for about a year, and then did not come back the next season, but the site improvements stayed in place. The staff report memorandum has an aerial photo showing the site in the spring of 2014, in which the paved driveway, the gravel parking area, the pavers for the sales area, the landscaping are all very apparent. In early September, the applicant came into the office, I informed her that what she wanted to do would require, in my interpretation, a minor modification to the revised site plan with the removal of the seasonal produce sales area and the installation of a mobile food service unit as a coffee service kiosk. She submitted the applications, went a site, a modified site plan, notice was sent out to all the neighboring property owners as required by the code, and approximately three weeks later, I issued my order of approval, sent out a notice of decision to the property owners, neighboring property owners that had contacted me, the applicant, as I said in the introduction, the planning commission and the city council. City council member called it up, we had a discussion about it in early November, the council retained jurisdiction, and you've got my draft order before you. I think the primary issues that need to be addressed are the requirements for parking areas and driveways to be paved, and the compliance with the standards for drive-through service that are in the code. As I noted in my staff report, I interpreted the code to, and to, the architectural design standards that apply to commercial development, because this is not a building, it is a mobile food service unit, does not require a building permit through the Marion County Building Inspection's interpretation of the building codes. I interpreted our code that this was not a building and did not need to meet the architectural design standards in our code, and also did not need to meet the architectural design standards in the CCNRs for the subdivision in which it is located. The council has the ability to interpret the code differently and require compliance with those requirements, but that is, the draft order that you have in front of you interprets it to not require compliance with those standards because the applicant is not proposing a building. The draft order contains three conditions of approval. The first is that all prior conditions of approval from 2013 shall continue to be met unless specifically changed in the, by the revised site plan and the order. Secondly, that a revised site plan be submitted that allows at least 60 feet of queuing space for the drive-through window in addition to the vehicle being served. The code requires that a minimum queuing for three vehicles for a drive-through service window. It looked like the site, the revised site plan the applicant submitted in mid-November showed only 44 feet between the mobile trailer and the property line, which would not allow for three queuing vehicles in addition to the vehicle being served. So there's a condition of approval that would require the site plan be revised that provides at least 60 feet for queuing space. And thirdly, that the site plan show the proposed location of one-site parking for a minimum of two vehicles. The code requires a minimum of two parking spaces for an eating and drinking establishment of this size, which is only 160 square feet, and requires that at least one of the spaces meet the requirements for a handicap parking space with proper markings and signage, and that the driveway lane for the drive-through service shall be paved with asphalt or concrete. I have suggested that due to the time of year that we have found ourselves in, that the business be allowed to be opened without the paving, provided that there is some type of performance guarantee filed with the city, and that the paving of the parking areas and driveways be accomplished no later than May 15th of 2018. So those are the three conditions of approval that I have recommended that the council And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have when we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Questions from the council at this point?
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Dan, when you granted the initial application approval, did you tell the applicant that it was subject to review based on the land use? What I'm saying is potentially be able to call up?
No, I did not.
Okay. Do you know when? You're not calling it a building, you're calling it a mobile kiosk, when was that placed on the site?
That was placed on the site sometime in late September, it was before my early October decision was issued.
I'm sure I'll have more questions as we go, Mr. Mayor? That's it for now?
No more? I have a number of questions.
Mark, councillor, would you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
Councillor Gronquist, I, first of all, full disclosure, I drink coffee. Secondly, and I believe Sharon, is Sharon, is the name of the applicant, right?
Heidi.
Heidi, I'm sorry, Heidi. I should know that one, that's a name that's important to me. Heidi, I'm sorry. Are you prepared to meet what Keith's conditions are? Or, yeah, Dan's conditions are?
Yeah, I think it's totally reasonable.
Okay. Are we making a molehill out of a mountain of coffee beans here? There are four coffee stands in town, many of them have drive-through windows that face streets. If they're willing to meet those conditions that our planning commission has put on it, you know, I saw Jerry Abud, and I appreciate Jerry's photos and his input and his letters, but to me, the standing water in parking lots looks just like the standing water in every paved parking lot after a rainstorm in this town, and the mud tracks look no different than the mud tracks that are out by the fire station as I came home tonight from Salem, from a farm vehicle driving across the road out there on the state, West Stateen. So, you know, I don't see this as huge issues, I think this is just, you know, it's a coffee stand, it's a trailer coffee, so we have four of them in this town, they all do a good business. I don't think you've got the greatest location in the world, but if you're willing to meet the conditions that Dan and his staff have placed upon you, you know, I hope you do well.
So with a wish for advocacy, we...
Well, no, I mean, is she going to meet, the key condition is, will she do what Dan said asked her to do?
Yeah.
And she said yes, in a public forum, so that's my...
I have a question.
Other questions from the council, please?
I have a question of clarification for Dan. So, Dan, one of the major changes, it seems like that you're asking is, it was that they had to pave within five years, right? And now you're asking that they pave by 2018? Wasn't that originally, in the original agreement, that they pave within five years?
My October decision did not, yes, indicated that the parking lot would need to be paved if they were still in business five years from the time that decision was issued.
Okay.
I'm now recommending to the council that you require the parking lot be paved, but because if this was June instead of December, it would need to be paved before they open.
Okay.
So I've suggested that because of the time of year, that it would be reasonable to, provided we get some guarantee that it will happen, to allow the business to be open.
So, the last business that was allowed to open there, they did have that five-year window to get a chance to establish their business before laying out the kind of money that it takes to pave something, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions from the council?
Where's it going?
Well, let's go, let's go to proponents' testimony. Those in favor of this proposal, or this application. If you want to get up and say something? There we go. Please, tell us who you are and where you live, and go ahead on it.
Thank you for having, taking the time to listen to what I have to say. My name is Tom Melindy, I'm a resident of Omsole. I do a lot of business here in Stateen. I've known your applicants for a long time, served alongside one of them in two different I think that this is the face of business in Stateen, and this is what you want the face of business to be. These people are motivated, they're dedicated to this, and they will be here for a long period of time. I think that any city should think twice about sending business on its way or being unfriendly to business, especially veteran-owned business. Thank you very much for your time.
Could you give us your address?
243 North Fifth, Omsole.
I guess I only said, tell us who you are and where you live. I should have said, give us an address, but that's fine. Next?
My name is Bob Anderson, I live in Spring Breeze Drive, a few hundred feet away from the site. I just want to agree with what the previous...
We're needing addresses, part of the record.
2155 Spring Breeze.
Okay.
So I just wanted to express support of what was just said, I agree. I don't think it should be the position of the city council to hinder people that are ambitious, and the entrepreneur spirit should be encouraged by the city council. I also know both the Jerries. I'm not sure that I understand what the real issues are here, you know, to hear stuff about drive-through windows facing streets, I mean, that's got to be a joke. So, I just want to express support, I'm a neighbor, I drive past that place every day, I'd love to get some coffee, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else under proponents? Okay, go ahead.
I'm Colton Bradley, I live over on Westfield Court, I don't really want to give my house address, you have it on a green piece of paper up there.
Do you live 1462 Westfield?
Yes. Thank you.
Pretty good guess.
Legally, it has to be there.
Okay. I just want to say I fully support what they're doing, I think that the council should also support as much local business as possible, I think that's something this town needs, and I'm excited to try their coffee, and I think as far as the whole, the paving issue, I think they should be given more time than just May to pave, because, I don't know, I 've never opened a business, but I've heard that it takes a long time to start making profit, so, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you, Colin. Anyone else?
My name is Tricia Sickendick.
Tricia?
Yes, Sickendick.
Oh, okay. No, I've heard that name before.
Yes.
And what's your, what's your address, Tricia?
1870 Westchester Court.
Okay, thank you.
Northwest Salem, Oregon.
Go ahead.
I believe that what I came to say is that I believe, just like other people have said in small business, in creating a town environment. The other issue I wanted to bring up is Heidi, as being my sister-in-law. My nephew, who is autistic, just graduated, and he is also going to be working with his mom hand-in-hand to learn different skills throughout this journey. And to bring up issues such as windows facing the wrong direction, I think we're pulling at straws here, and this type of work environment and teaching skills to a gentleman who is autistic and has the skills and abilities to learn these things and take these things even further, is a huge lesson, I believe, also to our, to the community. I used to work in this community, and again, I've also seen all the other coffee carts in town, and it's important, those kind of things are important to show the community members as well. As far as the paving goes, I do believe that they should be given the same opportunity that the previous people or the previous business had. That would give them the opportunity to gain equity in their business and allow that to become an asset for them. And this is about growth opportunity, and this is about personal and small business and bringing a community together. So to be pulling at straws, to me, seems a tad bit extreme at these type of levels when there are so many other coffee carts in town.
Okay.
Thank you, Heidi. Someone else?
Good evening, Justin Auganaga, 18433, Holden Hammer Road. Facebook creeping on them, they're using Tico's Coffee, and it's my uncle's coffee place, he's local, he was out of sublimity for many years, he's now in Omsole. He's local, he was out of sublimity for many years, he's now in Omsil. So using local coffee to help a small business, help another small business, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse about the whole paving thing. I think we can all agree on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Someone else?
Name's Daniel Cushman, address is 27546 South Klinger Road, Campy, Oregon. I deployed with him to Afghanistan, and they're people of their words, so you give them a small crunch time, they'll fill it, and we'll help them do whatever they need to get done to get this thing going. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming down this evening. Yeah, someone else? There we go.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Carter, 411 Whitney Street. I live directly kitty-corner to their kiosk. Just speaking as a resident and speaking on behalf of my neighbors, we've all talked about it, I would certainly rather look at that coffee shop than a steadily disintegrating blue tarp on a piece of refrigeration and a bunch of weeds and a fence around a bunch of nothing, so it's a vast improvement over what we had just a few months ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone else?
Hello, Austin Shamblyn, 1615 Hummingbird Lane, Southeast Stateon, Oregon. I work at Brookshore, there's a lot of staff there that feel very strongly about having that coffee shop there, because every other coffee shop is all the way in town. To have a coffee shop, five minutes, maybe 10-minute walk, would be amazing, and I've already talked to a couple of my coworkers, and that's 60-plus people that are instantly going to be going there. So clearly, there's a demand for them, and I think that not only Brookshore, or not Brookshore, Brookdale, and all the other businesses accompanying it could really use that flow and would like for another business to be there, just from the community and everyone around there. I think it'd be an important business to have down there.
Thank you. Someone else? There we go.
My name is Erica Ingram, and I live at 623 Summer View Drive. I recently purchased my home there in Sylvan Springs, and when I was looking at purchasing the home, there was that blue tarp, and the lot there looked rundown. And I've been pleasantly, it's been a pleasant thing for me to see a business go in there instead of a lot that could drive down property values in that neighborhood, whether it be right next door or a few blocks away. So I'm excited for the fact that there's a business going in, and I would hope that the Council would consider the costs of a brand-new business, consider the fact that the owners have put a lot of time and effort into making their budgets, knowing what was going to be asked of them prior to the change in the decision and calling this up. And just consider, what would you want the Council to do if you were in that position as well? Thank you.
Thank you. No one? Well, let's move along then. How about opponents' testimony? Is there anyone that is not in favor of this that wants to say something? Mr. Abut?
Good evening, Mayor Porter and the Senate Council. I've given you all copies of this memo dated December 4th, and I would like that entered into the records, please. I've given it to the staff as well as to the Councilmember, the mayor. I want to start out by saying I don't object to a coffee shop going in there.
There we go. Sure, thank you.
What I'm objecting to is the fact that the code isn't being followed if we proceed along the lines of, hey, it's a good idea, let's have it, it's fixed up the site, it's done all of these things. I don't object to any of that. What I do object to is ignoring the code. What I'd first like to address is what I believe is the inappropriate consideration of modifying the original 2013 site plan for use in 2017. That site plan, the 2013, should not be allowed to be modified for the following reason. That plan is four years old. The site has not been used in three years. These are new applicants, it's not the same applicants that were on the first original site plan. The site will be used for a different business. It's a coffee, not a produce stand. The new business is year-round. The original business was seasonal. All of these things are important when you're putting together a site plan to look at them. This use is a drive-through service, which is a high use for this particular piece of property, or any property in the city. If you look at all the systems development fees and see how they're computed, it's based upon traffic. This is high use, the previous use was a much lower use. Driveways are being proposed, are proposed or being used for the drive-through, possibly two service windows. A building, which is a trailer, is now being proposed instead of a tent that was there. And I disagree with the staff when they call, they're not calling it a building. It is a building, it just happens to be on wheels. And there's also different ownership is on the application from 2000, the property is different from the application in 2013 to today. These eight different items I have listed are all major modifications of the 2013 plan that should not be allowed. And I believe your city attorney, or your land use attorney has explained that about major and minor modifications and what you can and can't do. My belief is you cannot modify the 2013 site plan because of the major modifications. You have to start all over with a new site plan. The 2017 site plan, and I believe there's been three so far, given to the city, is hard to follow. All of them are incomplete. They do not show everything that a site plan says you need to have on it. They're inaccurate, and they're not to scale. It's hard to figure out where things are if they're not to scale. They range from one or two drive-up windows, different buildings, sightings, building in one part versus another part. No parking spaces are located in any of the site plans. No driveway dimensions or queuing links are on any of the site plans. The site plans help you make the decision of whether it fits the code or not. If they're not giving you the information, it's impossible to make that decision to allow them to use it. One plan shows one window serving from both the east and the west, consequently, needing to show queuing from both directions, it does not show it. As Dan pointed out, it's, they need the service, the car being serviced, plus three cars in line, those four cars total cannot be onto the driveway that goes between Martin Drive and Third, cannot be out onto this street, it cannot be into the parking lot of the adjacent liquor store. And I don't know how you have two different directions coming to one window if you have people coming from two directions, how they decide who's next. There is no landscaping or irrigation shown on the plan as required under a site plan. You have to have it. Now, Dan points out that a 2014 photo shows the landscaping. It does not show landscaping, it shows weeds. If you go out there and look at the site, there is no landscaping, except there's been some planted plants, and it's specifically for the rain garden, which is a very small park. 10,000-square-foot lot requires 1,500 square feet of landscaping. The 2013 plan doesn't show landscaping. I don't know how it ever got approved without showing landscaping. None of the 2017 plans show landscaping. The site plan shows a water and sewer connection, and the applicant says he will not hook up. Yet the code requires, not only that you put in the landscaping, but in a commercial district, the code requires that you irrigate the landscaping. How can you irrigate it if you don't hook up to water? 1,500 square feet, by the way. And as a matter of fact, it should be more than 1,500 square feet, because what the code also says is that whatever is not hard-surfaced, for instance, parking areas, the building, whatever, whatever else is not hard-surfaced, needs to be landscaped. So if you're only, if you're only taking care of 5,000 square feet of a 10,000-square foot, that leaves you another 5,000 square feet to landscape. It doesn't show that anywhere on these applications. Staff has taken the position that no building, no building permit, consequently, no design standards or SDCs are required to be implemented or collected. The site plan review, now this is from, I didn't quote it exactly, but you can look it up on the code. Under site plan review, it defines it, is in part is defined as a detailed examination of physical change of a proposed development or improvement to property. Improvement to property. It doesn't mean a building. The Development Code states under Purpose, under 17.20.010, that the intent of this chapter is to designate specific standards and criteria for the development of property within the city. Both of these items, individually or together, would nullify staff's no-building position and would require architectural standards and CCNRs being enforced. They both talk about property, not just buildings. So you need to make that distinction. And nowhere do I see a discussion about systems development fees. System Development Code 13.12.205.6 says SDCs are payable for a development even if a building permit is not required. So whether you need a building permit or don't, doesn't matter. Even if there are no sewer or water connections, the transportation SDC needs to be collected, and the monthly transportation fees and stormwater fees that we all pay on our water bills need to be collected. This property is no different than the rest of us. I'd also like to mention that in addition to the specific code requirements, the city's form called Standard Conditions of Approval for Land Use Applications, it comes at the back of every application, points out again that there are landscaping requirements as well as requirements for a 1,200C DEQ permit. It talks about water flowing off of the property into the streets and wherever. Nowhere is this addressed in the site plan. And I just wanted to regress for a minute. Site plans are designed to tell us what we can and can't do. The city has a pre-application meeting that people can come into, they sit there and discuss and say, this is the areas that you need to be looking at. There should be no question about what you have to do prior to filling out a site plan. The three site plans submitted in 2017 have never been filled out, never. They've been scratched over of the 2013 one. And if you looked at them, if you looked at all three of them, you'll see how poorly they were done and how incomplete they are. And I don't blame the applicant in the sense, because most people don't know these things. Most people have never done a site plan review. I've submitted at least three of them to the city and gone through the process. There's lots of technical things in here, and if you read the code, you'll see that. And I have previously submitted a letter that identifies by code number all of those areas that are not being handled correctly, in my view. They go everywhere from the parking to landscaping to irrigation to queuing. They're listed in that, Dan included it in the packet for you to read. So if you want to look up those code numbers, you can see exactly what it says. And while I appreciate people coming in and supporting the coffee people, it's one thing to say, yeah, it's a great thing, let's do it, we all want coffee, they're good for the community, these are nice people, that's one thing. But the City Council is obligated, and the city is obligated, to go by the code. You can't just write the code off and say, hey, I don't like that, I don't like the fact that you can't have a window that faces the street. Well, I don't like that one either, and I can explain a little bit if you ever wanted why that's in there, but it can be modified. But you can't modify it tonight. You can't modify it next, two weeks from tonight. This isn't about opening the drive-through facility or coffee facility. It's not about being business-friendly. Certainly, the city ought to be business-friendly. Our code is in place, it's the law of the city. If you think the law of the city is not business-friendly, change it. Again, you're not going to be able to change it tonight. What we're talking about is following the law, which is the city codes. You're obligated to follow the law, whether you think it's proper or not. It's about, another really big thing, it's about holding every development and every developer, every builder, everybody the same standard. I'm being held to the standard of putting a parking lot in on a building, paving it. You know, why shouldn't everybody else have that same standard? Because they don't have the money? Because they're just, they're not sure if the business is going to make it? That's not the condition. Read the code where it says you have to do it, and nowhere in the code can I find anywhere that allows the city to waive the paving. You can't say, geez, it's not a good idea that they have to pave it in five months, let's give them two years. You can't do that. There's nothing in the code that allows you to do that. And the third thing, this is about making a better community. That's what the code's all about. That's what all these things are about. People may not think they're proper, but what I would ask you to do, and I'll sit down here, is to follow the law, follow the codes. That's all I'm asking you to do. And if you feel the laws are unfair, or if they're unreasonable, consider changing them. After your public hearings, change the code, but change them in the appropriate venue, and that's after publicizing that you're going through a public hearing system to change various codes. Thank you for your time, that's all I have.
I have a question. Can we have questions, Jerry?
I guess so.
I have a lot as well.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, can we... Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question for you, Mr. Abut.
You're going to talk to me?
I'm talking to you.
What is your question?
I'm curious, since you have owned the property next door for a number of years, why you didn't come forward when there was the same, very same stuff going on in 2013? An unpaved parking lot, actually, also a somewhat temporary building. Why now? Why not in 2013, when a kind of a precedent was being set for what we were expecting on that property?
Well, very good reason. I didn't own the property in 2013, that's the answer to it. I wasn't in the 300-foot notification area, and so I was never notified of it. I could have been notified, I guess if I read all the notices that are published in the paper and all, but I didn't read them.
Okay, that answered my question.
But believe me, if I was aware of it, I would have been up there at that hearing as well. as well. Does that answer your question?
Jerry, would you take another question?
Certainly.
Mr. Booth, thank you for being our mayor and being an esteemed citizen, and I appreciate that. To the best of my knowledge, and perhaps Dan can correct me, none of our existing coffee stands or trailers meet all the objections that you've listed tonight. They are wheeled vehicles with service windows facing streets, not all of them have the ability, for instance, Kickstart, to take a four-car thing. The city is also...
I can answer that, if that's a question.
I've got a whole bunch of them for you, okay? The city is also obligated to do what it can to make state a better place for all of us to live and work, and I thank you for that. As a member of the Planning Commission, I embraced tiny houses, which are wheeled, regarding paving in five years. In 2013, we asked that lot be paved, paved in five years. The applicant Heidi has agreed publicly tonight to meet the conditions from the Director of Planning, which would be paving it in 2018, which is in the, in the initial five-year timeframe. I realize that ownership changes, but ownership has changed on The Grove and many other buildings downtown in that timeframe. Produce stands, I love fresh produce, they, they generate a ton of traffic. That's no more or no less than a coffee stand. And regarding tarps versus movable buildings, I'd much rather have a tiny house or a coffee shop on wheels rather than a weed-covered lot with a blue-tattered tarp.
Mr., may I ask you a question?
Certainly, sir.
Have you made up your mind on how you would vote on this?
Well, I appreciate your letters, and I appreciate the input, but no, not until today did I make up my mind.
I'm sorry?
Not until today did I make up my mind.
Okay. Because it sounds like you've made up your mind.
I made up my mind when I downloaded 105 pages and read them.
Okay. Now, the question...
Hold on, Mr. Mayor, we have a problem.
Okay. Mr. Lane?
The, the rules require that you can't develop a predisposition until the hearing is closed.
I'm not saying, I'm not willing to listen to other views, I, whether I, perhaps I misspoke, Mr. Booth, in terms of making up my mind.
I believe you have misspoke. You misspoke earlier on, going through, asking all those...
Well, I appreciate your objections. Your objections made me read the code.
You know, as Mr. Lane points out, and I'm not an attorney, but you're supposed to be acting in what's called a quasi-judicial manner, and I think you probably understand that, which means...
Very, very much I do.
You can only make your, you're like a jury. You can only make your decision after all...
All the evidence is presented, but your evidence was presented today. Your letter of 11/27 was very, very articulate and very well-done.
But all the evidence is not in until tonight.
Well, we'll listen to, I will openly listen to this, I appreciate your letter of 11/27. It was very convincing. I was very surprised to see this letter tonight, sir.
I think it's appropriate, Counselor, to state for the record that you are willing to listen to the rest of the testimony with an open mind.
I look forward to anything that any proponent or opponent brings to the table, and will judge it with a very open mind.
And you feel you can go ahead with this hearing and vote in fair and just manner?
Very much so, I mean, you know, absolutely. Jerry made me look at a lot of codes, and I really appreciate that.
Yeah, actually, it started with the question, would you like me to answer it?
Please, yeah, that's, yeah.
The answer was, why does everybody else have all of these windows and...
Yeah, I mean...
And especially the facing the streets. Well, that, I believe that code was changed in 2006, after those buildings were in place. And I, earlier suggested I could tell you some of the reasoning behind it, and it's, some of it's flawed. The reasoning behind it, the streets was, people weren't looking at coffee shops when they were looking at it, they were looking at McDonald's and Dairy Queens with big speakers. And they were afraid that if these things were on, facing the public streets and facing a residential area, that would cause a problem for the residences. My guess is that, that code should have said, if you don't have the speakers, that's not a problem. Or if you exceed a decibel level, it's a problem, and less than that, it isn't. And that's one of those things that probably should be changed. But again, like I said earlier, you can't change that tonight. You have to follow the code. And I don't see how you could come to any other conclusion other than denying this application because of what the code requires. And that's why I pointed out the code numbers and what each one of them means. This is just not some haphazard thing with me that I say, oh, yeah, I, I don't want that going on. I own property down there, I invested a lot of money in it, I want it to, to, whatever's developed is look like the rest of them. And the other two pieces that are vacant down there, when they come before the Planning Commission or Dan, I'm going to be there testifying to, or at least watching to see what's going on. There's, actually, there's more than two, there's probably four parcels that haven't been developed yet. You done with me?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Are there any other opponents' testimony this evening?
My name's Jerry Flowers, 412 Meadow Brook Lane, stating. Jerry pretty much covered a lot of it. My biggest, I'm not opposed to the coffee shop, period. I think it's a great idea. I, I deal with codes a lot here lately, it seems like, and I just don't want to go down to somebody and be nice to them at the city to get them to do what I want. I don't want a good old boy decision. If I make you feel good, you vote for me. If I make you feel bad, you vote against me. I don't want that. If we got a code, then I like to go by the code. On this particular coffee shop, I think it's a great idea. It's been an eyesore down there, and they're right, it looks good. It looks better than it did. The issue I have with it, there's a 60, excuse me, let me get my glasses on. There's a, there's a 44 feet by 64 feet on the site plan. And there's an eight feet by 44 feet on the site plan. It's 3,168 square feet. It's almost 30% of the lot, and it's not labeled. What is it? That's my question. Is it paving? Is it parking? Dan said that in, in this next year, that it's going to be paved. And I think it's a great idea, because that's be 46, 45, 46 degrees, paved. So that's, makes perfect sense to me. If it's labeled landscape, then it should be landscape, and meets the landscaping code. If it's paved, it should be paved and meet the paving code, or whatever, or they're hard-surfaced, or concrete, or whatever it is. It's not labeled, then the site plan isn't to scale, so I don't know. I can't figure it out, because I add, I add the dimensions they got on here, and it's 116, I think, feet. Well, the lot's only 104. I don't know, I don't know how you'd figure it out. I mean, I see arrows and stuff, and that's great if, if the city understands it, or whatever, but it should be on there. I gotta do them all the time, and it costs a lot of money to have one done. But I understand money is an object, but the code's not. Because I don't want to, I don't want to have to be nice to somebody. If it meets the code, then I want you guys to vote for the code, and to vote for the project, if it was mine. If I don't meet it, or trying to get something around the code, vote against it. That's the way I want everybody to be. It's either the code, or it's not the code. I don't want, I don't like good old boy deals, because you can't remember what you did to the last guy. You don't know what the precedent is from what you told the last guy. So you gotta go back what's written. And I've sent you some diagrams. In the orange spot there, I got it in orange right there, that orange spot with the lines through it, that's the area that's not defined. That's a pretty big portion of it. And somebody should have caught it, I don't know if Dan didn't, or if the applicant didn't, just name it. And whatever its name, that's, there's a code for it. And I submitted, I'm the one that submitted these drawings, by the way, like this. I submitted them so the applicant would see the code, and I highlighted it, and would see this area that's not defined. Because I didn't know, this is the only avenue we have to talk about, really. So anyway, that's why I'm for the coffee shop, I'm for everything, I just want it to meet the codes. That's, it's just it. Otherwise, when you go to develop, or I go to develop, or she or he goes to develop, they're going to go and say, well, I'm going to develop this. Well, I gotta go be nice to that guy so he can make a decision. Well, it's either the code, or it's not the code. That's how I feel about it. And that's, anyway, thank you. Oh, can I submit what I've just been saying, I wrote it down? Can I submit that into the record?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Flowers also.
Yes, these are his. Those are the ones that, those are his? Those are what he said were his.
So could you stay there for a minute, Jerry?
Oh, yes. Man.
Am I okay to ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Yes.
You have a question?
Can I ask him a, can I ask him a question?
Absolutely.
I'm actually going to ask you the very same question, since I know that you lived at your current property in 2013. The previous people that had the produce stand there, did you raise any concerns at the time that they opened their produce stand, and the, the fact that they, they also would not have been following any of the rules? And if you didn't, why not?
Me? I live at 412 Meadow Brook Lane, and I didn't get the notice either.
And this time, you did get a notice?
This time?
How did you hear about it this time?
I own the daycare center there at, at the center there.
Okay. So you were, you were also notified and not notified previously?
And I own the vacant field half of it.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks for telling. Anything else, Jerry?
No. Oh, one other thing, just a side note, there's a field there. When they drive through there, and it's not the coffee shop's problem either, but I own the field there, and they're pulling off into the field and parking, because everything gets convoluted. And the coffee shop doesn't park just during their hours. That's all they use, probably all they use, is what the lady said.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
But when they close, that is an absolute parking lot. They park there, and they drive through there and out of there. So that's another reason why I wanted that particular 3,168 square feet identified, if it's landscape, or if it's driveway or parking lot.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question on that? All right. Thank you. Can I have one more question, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
The photo you submitted was a liquor delivery truck parked there, had nothing to do with the coffee shop, right?
Yeah, is that a loading zone?
Out of the loading zone, a liquor delivery truck.
I know, but is it a loading zone? It's a truck, a delivery truck.
The coffee shop has nothing to do with the liquor store, nor should the liquor store truck should be parking there.
My sentiments, exactly. It's, it's used as a loading zone.
Well, I agree with you, but that's nothing to do with the coffee shop, sir.
Nope, it does not.
Okay.
Nope. Nothing.
Anything else on opponents? Okay. How about government agencies? Either Dan or Mr. Lane, anything that would bear on this? Any, any agencies, county, state, federal, United Nations, anything?
If they're here to testify, they'll do so.
Okay. NATO?
I have another question, I don't know who it should go to.
Well, we got some, all these shy people sitting back here. Okay, how about general testimony? Questions from the public, then? I would hope that this last 15 or 20 minutes of discourse would have stimulated some of you to find some questions. Certainly, sir.
Podium.
Please identify yourself. He knows how this works, he's been around.
Sorry, my voice isn't good tonight, I'm getting over cold. My name is Shannon Turek, I live in Gates, Oregon, I have property in Stateon.
Address, please, we have to notify you of this decision.
Gates is 33693 Railroad Avenue, and, and I have commercial property in Stateon, not in this particular area. And I just have a question for you, because, well, a couple of questions for you. It strikes me as you do have your mind made up tonight, and did before you arrived, and you're not supposed to have a vote tonight.
I don't have my mind made up, because I'm listening to your testimony right now, sir, so please talk to me.
Okay.
I read 105 pages of submissions today, including the ones I just shared with the council. What I did not read was the letter that came on 12/4, i.e. today, from Mr. Booth. I looked into his 11/27 letter with great, if you like, sir, this is all about the coffee shop, and you're welcome to read it. I've done more research than probably anybody in this dais.
Okay, and, you know, that's, I'm glad to hear it, but I'm thinking you made up your mind before you arrived.
I have not, sir, and I'm waiting to hear you change, to, to, to give me a reason to go one way or the other.
Okay. So, I don't know how to put this exactly, but when you don't follow your codes, and you decide to vote for this project, you're actually going to hurt her, because you're not the final authority. And what happens, and I've seen it so many times with Stateon, is we don't follow the rules. And when, I'm just saying, I think I know how you're going to vote, and I actually think you're hurting her. I'm all for the coffee shop, I'd like to see a coffee shop there. I mean, and I'd like to see the codes followed, and I think there's a way that she could work it out. And I actually don't think the two Jerries are the enemy that she probably thinks they are. But I, I don't understand, you know, when, when I watch it and I see people who I think are not following the rules, it's like, you're supposed to be like a judge tonight, and you're not supposed to have come in here knowing what the final answer is that you have. And you don't even try to fake it, to my, in my opinion.
Well, I would never fake it. What I wanted to do was research the codes, and there were 105 pages you're more than welcome to look at.
Of codes?
Of, of references, letters, submissions, Planning Commission reports regarding this. They're all right here, besides the ones I shared with the council, you're welcome to this folder.
Okay, well, I looked at the codes. And what I saw, for instance, well, let me ask you a question again.
My turn, my, can I speak, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
In the end, in a capitalistic society, whether she makes it or not is determined by the customers she attracts. Has nothing to do with you, or I, nor Jerry, or anybody else. I was a C student in banking school, but I'm not sure if she's got the best location or not. It's up to the consumers and the product she delivers, if she chooses, if we choose to allow her to be there.
I'd like to see this discussion move on a more linear track, rather than a circular one, please.
You know, there are the codes, and take the paving and the code. You're either following the code on paving, or you're not. When it comes to parking, you're either following it or not. When it comes to ADA rules, you're either following it or you're not. If you're going to follow the codes, there's no way, there's no way that this would go through tonight. Your attorney would tell you that, there's no chance of it going through. And you're not doing her a service by voting for it when she's gonna, when then it's going to get appealed to Luba, and they're going to go against it. Because they're not going to agree with you, Mark, they're just not, and I don't, I don't mean to...
Don't, don't tend to agree with me, it's not me. It's a group decision here, we're council. Secondly, I don't know of any coffee shop that is fully ADA compliant, I work in elder care, I'm very familiar with HIPAA and ADA every day. The windows in coffee shops at Kickstart and Cowboy, and the one across from Wilco are not ADA compliant. That's a fact, I don't know whether hers is or not, it's immaterial at this point.
ADA is immaterial at this point?
I'm saying that the windows at the existing coffee shops are not ADA compliant. I can guarantee you that, sir.
And that's the other thing, existing is one thing, this is not existing, you keep commenting on existing, this is not existing.
You were the one who said the rules should be applied fairly to all.
Yes, they should be. And you can't go by, you know, I, I...
I work in elder care, no ADA.
My building was built in the 30s, it's, there's no way it's ADA compliant, it was built in the 30s. Whenever something new is done to it, a new project, then we have to put forth 15% of that money towards ADA compliance. And I've done it every time.
It was passed in 1986, I believe?
Pardon?
ADA was passed in 86, I think all of our coffee stands are post-86. I'm not the one to judge ADA, it's not something you or I can judge.
Okay. When you vote for this, all I'm really saying, Mark, is, is you're actually hurting them, because they don't realize what's going to happen. They don't realize that on appeal, Luba's simply going to look at it, they're going to look at your codes, they're going to know you broke your rules, that you just ignored them and broke them.
It's not my rules, sir, it's the city's rules.
Right.
It's all of our rules.
Right, and they're very clear.
It's not personal, sir.
I know, and they're very clear, and I don't mean to make it personal. I know, I mean, I'm listening tonight, and I, and I really feel you're just deciding to break your own codes. There's just no reason for that.
Our Planning Commission Director has made an advisory to the council.
Yes.
We are acting on his advisory, not our...
Well, maybe you should ask the lawyer before you make your decision tonight, not just your planning commission.
Our lawyer provided us with four points and about seven pages of commentary, I think they're public record.
Great. I'd like to hear what he has to say tonight. You know, if he agrees that you should follow the code or not. Is there going to be a, are you going to speak tonight?
If I'm asked by the mayor.
Okay, well, thank you.
Wally, would you care to make a comment on this? Wally, would you care to make a comment on this?
Can, can I?
Roundabout.
Let's get off of this, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's interesting to listen to, but these things can devolve, devolve into way off-topic and way off-subject and...
Mr. Mayor?
...get into personalities, and then it becomes not much fun.
Mr. Mayor, can I have, ask a clarifying question? Because nothing's making sense to me with that until I get something clarified. Before anybody else talks, I would like to do that.
Mr. Lane? And then you can ask. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to be totally confused by what he says unless I know this.
I would be more than happy to defer. Well, okay. Let's hear it.
I am a little confused, and I'm certain that that's not doing this. Are we, it seems to me like there are two kind of sets of different codes here. One for buildings and one that is for non-existent buildings. Mr., our planning person has said that that is not a building, and so the codes for buildings don't apply, yet we're hearing testimony about codes for buildings. So that, I guess that's where I'm confused. Is this a building or is this not a building? And, and so, I guess that's where I'm confused, is at the very basis of it. If it's, if it's a building, then there are codes for those buildings. But if it's not being considered a building, then that makes the codes totally different. And so I guess my question is, which is it? So I know what I'm supposed to be looking at.
Mr. Lane? Wally? It is a matter of interpretation. And your planning staff has given you his recommendation as to what he believes the appropriate interpretation of your code is, as to each and every one of the points that have been raised. The ultimate decision is up to you. You can follow his recommendation, or you cannot follow his recommendation. It is, there are findings that are missing here. And I've heard more and more tonight that require additional findings, depending on how you end up voting. Luba has basically said, if a member of the public raises an issue with sufficient specificity for us to understand what it is, then we are required to respond to that. We can agree or not agree, but we have to write a finding in the final decision that tells Luba, and tells the applicant, and tells the person who raised that, what our opinion is on it. Is it a building? We say, yes, it is a building. Is it a building? No, we say it's not a building. But we have to have findings. And there are, I think, seven different points that I've heard tonight that have been raised that are not currently addressed in the order, that need to be addressed in order to fulfill Luba's obligation for us to make adequate findings. And there is, there's a real basic missing element, and I tried to address this in my memo, and that is that the first interpretation that you have to make in this case is, at what point in time, when a person comes up to the planning counter, can you determine that that's going to be a modification, minor or major, as opposed to an original new application? And you have heard testimony today that, you know, you've got different owners, different uses, all these different things. The question is, how long does an approval last? You have a 2013 approval that has basically been abandoned, but does that continue on infinitum? Our code doesn't help us with that. That's up to you. And we've not ever had this issue come up. And so what we're looking for you, in your final decision, is to tell us at what point in time can Dan, as the planning director, tell a person, yes, this qualifies for modification? Now, let's look. Is it a minor modification or is it a major modification? The threshold question is not addressed. The threshold question has no findings and no conclusions. Without that, and the issue having been raised, we are definitely going to get this handed back to us from Luba, if it's taken to Luba. And I agree with, with Mr. Abud, who has run this path before, that if it goes to Luba, it is a time-consuming, expensive matter. Luba takes six, seven months, and the coffee shop's not going to open if it's not done correctly. And so what we have recommended is that you deliberate, tell us how you want this thing to come out. Dan and I will then put our heads together and create the language necessary to carry out your ultimate decision. And then we bring that back to you at your next meeting with some verbiage and some language, and then you can decide whether we got it right or not, or whether we have to tweak it. But my opinion is, you cannot make a final decision to the point where you're writing and signing an order tonight, because that's a guarantee remand from Luba. That what you can do tonight is make your decision, and then instruct staff to flesh out the existing order that you have before you, and then bring it back for technical adoption at the next meeting. Thank you, Wally. Is the whole crowd familiar with what Luba is?
No.
Is that those acronyms, the Land Use Board of Appeals?
Okay, because at the last meeting, it was said that whatever the council decides is final. This is the first time I've ever heard about Luba, or Luba, or whatever it is.
Well, can I say that Luba hangs over your head on any of these land use decisions? It just, it's a state...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
My understanding from my opinion was, whatever you guys decide is final.
Can you come to the microphone, please, sir?
Yeah, it's final, all right, until they get a hold of it.
Mr. Mayor?
What? What am I supposed to do with this? This is Wally.
I think that what, 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 Mr., if I can, if I can preface or make, summarize kind of what Mr. Lane said is, is our decision is final here, and it will not be signed tonight, but whatever decision that we make here will come back in a form that hopefully will not be able to be changed by Luba. But it needs to be in the right context, whatever we do decide, so that it can't be challenged by Luba, or if it is challenged by Luba, it will still stand.
Can I, can I ask one other, or make one other statement?
Put your name and address on the tape for us, please.
Bill Sickendick, 1615 Hummingbird Lane. Statement. So we were told by Marion County that as long as the tires remain on the trailer, it is a mobile unit. It is not a fixed structure. Then we were told by the county that it has to be, it can't be hardwired in. So we had that redone to where it is not hardwired in. And that was our understanding to appease both the city and the county, to keep it a mobile structure. So that's what we did.
All right, thank you. Where were we? Where are we? Uh, in general, questions from the public?
Sir, did you submit those county documents to us?
Uh, now, hold on a minute.
Do we have a copy of those county documents? I'm not seeing them.
What?
The wheels on ones.
No, I don't. We were just told that by the county.
Would somebody address the chair when he wants to talk to the crowd, please? Thank you. Questions from the public, questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. We got some public questions?
Go ahead.
All right. Backtrack a little bit here. It's all right.
Tyler Gray, 16972 Fern Ridge Road, Staton, Oregon.
Okay.
I've just been keeping notes, and I went to the last meeting, and I'm, this is mostly just clarification for me all the way through. So, the last meeting was stated that January 11th, this all had to be finalized and signed, sealed, delivered. Is that true or not true?
That is the date that the city has to have its final paperwork written, signed, and entered in the city's record. That starts an appeal period to the Land Use Board of Appeals as soon as that's mailed out to the public.
The planning board initially approved this in early September, late September, was the initial, that it was approved?
I'm going to assume that was a question and not a statement.
Question.
The, the original decision was not from the planning commission. It was a staff decision made by me and issued, I believe, on October 4th.
Okay. And that was a conditionally approved modification to the original approval that was done in 2013, the initial approval for the produce stand?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Okay. And the conditional approved was, the five years was original and et cetera, et cetera, all the stack that you had on there, that was, it was approved at that point, correct, in October?
The decision that was issued in October was an approval. However, before that approval became final, it was called up by a city councilor.
Okay.
So therefore, the approval did not go into effect.
And then that brings up my next question. One of the council members brought up the initial concern. What was the initial concern at this point? Just, I'm just trying to duck all the rows and dot the i's and cross the t's and...
It was a code concern with the paving of a lot.
Okay. How was that brought to attention? With the initial send-off, because the notice was sent out to everybody and it came through...
The planner sends us his decision, and it's subject to review by the council. So in reviewing his decision, and seeing that, in my opinion, had a question about code, we called it up to the council.
How many times have these been, how often does this, these get recalled? This is just a question, just education for myself. How often are the, how often are the approvals given in Staton, and how often are they called up via a code violation or a question?
This is the first time.
I've been here for about 11 and a half years. This is the first one.
That's not correct.
The second one.
Second one. I called up one initially this summer.
Oh, right, but then you dropped the...
No, the applicant changed the...
Oh, okay, right. So, yes, you're correct.
Two and 11 years.
Second one.
Two and 11 years, okay.
I think there's more than that, my recollection.
Which suggests, to me at least, that the council makes pretty good land use decisions, by and large.
It's a check and balance, Mr. Mayor. It's part of the process.
Yeah. Not perfect, but pretty good.
Sorry, as I started getting a little bit off on my notes here, just, everybody was going a mile a minute there. I couldn't keep up with everybody. So, after the end of October meeting, it was decided to have a, a open meeting, which we are here tonight, sorry, what am I?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And the public hearing was to decide what was the end result of the public hearing? What was the initial idea coming into it that we were going to resolve or not resolve?
We're in the public hearing at this moment.
Correct. And what is the, what's the end result, regardless one way or the other? What are we, what's the, what are we trying to head to? What was the end result of tonight, hopes, dreams?
A decision on the application.
And at that point, then it would have been finalized, and they could go to business. They could go into business.
It has to be properly written, adopted, and signed, and then it's final decision of the city.
Which is subject to a 21-day appeal period.
After the fact.
After the decision becomes final.
That's, that's after it's already gone to public hearing once? It can go back to review again and be appealed again?
The city council's decision could be appealed either by the applicant or by any participant in the hearing, which is why we keep asking you to give us your name and address, because we're obligated to provide you with written notice of the decision once you become a participant. Any participant may appeal the city council's decision to the State Land Use Board of Appeals under state law.
Okay.
It's essentially a special court set up just for land use matters.
Okay. And tonight, and I'm just clarifying where everybody's, I'm trying to put it all back together here, or just, in my mind, like I said, I'm a little slow learner here. I'm just trying to ask questions. There is, there is two distinct codes, and I'm, I'm asking, on permanent structure and mobile structure that we know of? Is this correct?
Not, not, not really.
Not really? There's a gray area?
Not really.
Not really?
Not in my mind. It's not gray.
Okay, okay. I heard major and minor. I like major and minor. Anything that's not a major is a minor. Okay, well, that answers my questions for the most part. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Another, under questions from the public.
So, I got, I got a question for Councilman Quigley. So this was initially called up for, for what reason?
For the, looking at the code when the code requires the lot be paved.
Okay. So, I have this signed by you that says it's originally called up because, in addition to previous traffic objections...
Yeah, that was my secondary, that was my secondary concern.
Okay, we never received the first one. Why hasn't this been brought up all night or on November 6th?
The initial call-up was what I asked, what I put on there. That's the code itself. My secondary concern in talking with Dan was the traffic. And we're going to talk about it tonight.
This code, this code doesn't, isn't for the...
That's not, there's no tra, on the tra, on the traffic, there's no actual code number on there, is there?
Yes, it says review of SMC 72.20.010.0B.
That's the paving of the property. The second one, when I had a concern, was about the traffic pattern, the traffic flow.
Okay. So I was confused because it didn't, it didn't say anything about paving. It just said the code. And when I looked that up, I couldn't find anything.
If you look at the number on the code, it should be in regards to the paving of the property.
Nope, it says, "In addition to previous traffic obstructions on Whitney."
Is there a code number not written on there?
Nope.
Says, it says paving the lot, correct?
Nope, doesn't say anything about paving the lot.
Let me see that.
Would you like to see this?
Yeah, sure. That's why I articulated to Dan when I was in his office. Yeah, it's right there. Statement, supplemental code, SMC.
And I thought the SMC was...
No. That's why I said, "In addition to..."
That's an opinion or concern, the traffic. And that's, don't have a code for that. Okay. Questions from the council, unless there's other public comments. Okay?
My, my name is Paige Hook, and I live at 2088 Quail Run Avenue. I just have one concern sitting here. I don't, I do care, but I don't care either way which way this goes. It's interesting to learn this, but I do have a very serious concern with Councilman Cronquist's declaration that he had made up his mind. And my question is, are you willing to abstain from voting this evening based on your comment that you had made up your decision earlier today?
Mr. Mayor, that's a question that he should not answer. Okay. We'll let that one go. Anyone else? Come on up, please.
My name's Scott Vigil. Live at 116 North Evergreen. So if you go out here and take a left, just keep going until you get to 160. I'd like to make an observation that I found tonight. The city and, I, from what I have observed is that it stemmed from the staff at the planning department, that we have created a situation where we've divided a room. And that's not what the goal of any city council has ever done in probably history, is say, I want division of my town. That's not what we're, what we're looking for. And so, it really upsets me as being a, lived here my entire life, to see that when somebody comes into the planning department... When somebody comes into a planning department and says, here's my idea, I'm, in my mind, we've got professional people working in our planning department and they're able to do their job as layout what needs to happen. And that there's no questions when it comes to, let's get it. But when that's not clear and they're not given that, then it now becomes, well, we figured out, here's our list of objectives and we've planned and we've saved and we've got that ready to go until, oh, there's another step. Oh, there's another step. And oh, tonight even there's another step. That, that's not educating our people and that's not informing them. And I believe that that's what our planning department is there for. And so, my question for council is, are we considering that as part of the whole reason we're here tonight and why emotions have ran so high? Because I, I believe the whole thing can be avoided. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, let's see, is there anyone else on questions from the public? Okay, let's move on. We're an hour and a half into this and we're making some progress, not much, but some. Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'd like to know how we can modify something that no longer exists, start with. That's my first question for Dan.
Mr. Flashman?
While the use stopped, the site improvements that were put in place in 2013, following the revised, or actually following the original site plan approval of that year, are still in place. Let me use a slightly different example where I don't think there would be any question. If in 2013, site plan approval was given for the construction of a building and associated parking lot and landscaping, et cetera, for a retail store. And that building was built and the parking lot installed and the landscaping put in place and the retail store went out of business a year later. And the building sat there vacant for three years. And a insurance office came along and wanted to occupy that building and was not going to make any changes to the property other than occupying the building. My interpretation of our code says that they just need a simple change of use permit, no site plan approval is needed. No land use process is required. If they were going to make minor changes to the building or the parking area, then a minor amendment of the, minor modification to the previously approved plan would be required in that case. In the present case, there was no, there never was a building built. The original use was for retail. It happened to be seasonal, but it was a retail establishment. They operated out of a tent in the summer, packed up the tent in October or November and went away. And then they just happened to never come back. But the site improvements were made. The paved driveway was installed. The rain garden was constructed. The pavers for the sales area and the handicap spot were installed. The gravel parking area that was authorized at that time was put in. And the use went away, but the site improvements stayed there and sat unused for three years. So, when approached with, by this applicant, my interpretation was this was a minor amendment because the code defines what a major amendment or a major modification is. And it's a, defined as any one of the following. A change to the driveways and parking areas that impacts off-site traffic. And I did not see that that was going to be proposed. The driveway location onto Third Avenue was not going to change. Increasing the floor area by more than 15% of what was approved. What was originally approved was, I believe, a 20 by 40 tent, this, uh, sales area. What was proposed was an 8 by 20 sales area, so it was actually a decrease. Reducing the common area or landscaping by more than 10%. No change in the landscape area was proposed. Increasing the parking spaces by more than 10%. No, there was no increase in the number of parking spaces proposed. Adding or increasing lot coverage in a sensitive or hazard area, there is no sensitive or hazard area on the site. Changing the location of buildings, streets, parking, utilities, landscaping or other improvements by more than 10 feet. There was no building proposed originally and no building proposed as part of the modified plan because the original had a tent and the proposal is for a trailer. Changing any conditions of approval, there were none that were proposed by the applicant. And any change in an approved use that could have a detrimental impact on adjoining properties, I made the interpretation that going from retail produce stand to a coffee takeout would not have a detrimental impact on adjoining properties. So if it did not meet any of those eight criteria for being a major modification, then it's a minor modification. And I made that interpretation and took jurisdiction. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. I have another question for you.
Go ahead.
How does the pavement requirement all of a sudden change? Or how does it start anew when it's unrelated use of the, of the previous facility? So in your initial application, you told them five years. So how does that start anew? I mean, it's a totally different use of what it was.
It, it shouldn't have, and that's why my recommendation to council changed from my October 4th, uh, original decision.
Anything else, Brian?
No.
Questions, more questions from council?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question since the traffic thing was brought up.
All right, go ahead.
Is there anybody else on staff that might have a concern with traffic flow over there that you asked about or discussed with Public Works or anybody else?
Public Works Department, Police Department were all notified that the staff, that the pending staff decision was, that the staff decision on the minor modification was pending and asked to provide comments.
And they don't see a difference in seasonal temporary participation vendor versus daily operational vendor from a traffic flow pattern?
While I had discussions with other staff members, there was no, nothing submitted for my consideration in my original review, nor was anything submitted by any other staff or department for the council's consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Councilors? Nothing? Let's go on then to an applicant summary. Ms. Shamblin, would you care to make any kind of statement as we grind our way through this? If you would, please.
I know, I've heard that you guys have received and reviewed all these emails and such from Jerry and Jerry. And I just, I want to make sure that you guys have received my emails and read over those as well, everybody?
We have.
What was in the packet? Because I've sent at least two or three. And as of the last one, I hadn't heard. And there was also some things that I hadn't received in, as far as emails that were sent today or, or whatever. But I guess my, my statement would be that I brought this to the planning department and I did my part. I trust that the city has hired someone that knows what they're doing. He has a degree. I assumed that when I put that plan forth and it was approved and we've done what supposedly needed to be done, that that would be the end of it. And I, as a few other people here have said, I feel like we're really grasping at straws here. I'm just trying to open a mobile coffee shop and I want to do it in the town that I live in, which is why we're wanting to put it here. We can take it somewhere else. That's not what I want to do. I want to open it here. I've seen multiple comments on Facebook and phone calls. People want it to be here, they want it to open. And I'm, most of my product is coming from local companies, other local, right here in town, close to here in town. I'm trying to support local businesses in our community. And I just think that by grasping at these, what to me seems like silly straws that were harming our community and tearing it, kind of dividing it like someone had set up here. But I mean, I guess it basically comes down to what, what needs to be done, we'll do. We want to open here in Staten where we live. And, you know, that's, that's what it comes down to, but...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There... Mr. Lane? The material on the back counter sort of lays this out, but let me just remind everybody that there has been new material presented tonight. And I don't know if you've gotten copies of the stuff that was presented today or not. And it is available. This is the first public hearing.
This is the same one.
Yeah, that's his copy, that's extra copies.
And therefore, if, if after looking at that, you want to have more time to respond to the material that's in the, in the documents that were submitted tonight, you have the right to request that. That's a statutory right. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. Okay. All right. A staff summary, Dan. What else can you do for us or to us?
I already delivered, I already just delivered a substantial portion of what I intended to say in my staff summary. But let me, without repeating all of that, talk about the issue of minor modification, major modification, new application, et cetera. And I say that because I want to respond to, as, as, while we said earlier, we have an obligation in our decision to respond to the relevant testimony that was presented to you tonight in the public hearing. We cannot do that in advance when we prepare a draft order because it's done before the hearing and we don't know what testimony will come to the hearing. So, as the staff report says, or at least it usually says, that the packet includes a draft order, but, but that may need to be modified depending on the testimony at the hearing. Sometimes there's a roomful of people who have something to say and sometimes there's an empty room. And when we're writing the staff report and the draft order in advance, we never know which one it's going to be. But that being said, let me, I do want to, to make some remarks in response to some of the testimony so that you can consider that as you formulate whatever motion you make tonight, perhaps to modify the draft order or not. So, I think I, I already explained my rationale and why I determined that this application was a minor modification. I looked at the definition of a major modification and did not find that any of those standards were, or criteria were met. And so therefore, the definition of a minor modification is one that's not a major modification. Regardless of that decision that I made back in September as to whether this was a major or a minor, the same standards in the code apply to a development, whether it is considered to be a major modification or a minor modification. The fact that the difference between a major and a minor is the process. For a minor modification, it's a staff decision without a public hearing, but the neighbors are notified that they can come in and look at the application and provide information to the staff to help inform the staff decision. For a major modification, typically it would go to the planning commission and they would hold a public hearing. The same, the same people are notified, they're just invited to the public hearing instead of saying that there's an application on file, you can come and look at it and, and provide information. But the same standards apply. So it's kind of, in my mind, it's kind of immaterial whether my original decision, this is a minor modification, may have been right or wrong because it's now in your hands. And we're having a public hearing and you need to make a determination as to whether the standards in the code are met by the site plan or not. Whether you consider it to be a minor modification or whether you consider it to be a major modification or whether you consider it to be a new application. The same standards apply, the same findings need to be made, the same conclusions need to be drawn as to whether those standards are met or not. Whether the, it's a new applicant or new property owners, in my mind, is irrelevant. We're regulating a land use activity here. And the fact that ownership changes is irrelevant in my mind. It's the, you know, if we, again, going back to my analogy of a site plan approval and a building gets built, if two years later the building gets sold, we don't make the new owner come in for site plan approval. The site plan was completed, the development was built, we have a new owner. Tenants may come and go. It may, may change from dress shop to bookstore to grocery store, it's all still retail under our code. Second, and our, when a use changes, as I explained before, there is no requirement for a land use process if there's not a modification to the site. So, when, when a, when a tenant changes and it's a different use, they just come in and get a change of use permit and there is no land use approval. There was, there was, the issue has been raised about landscaping. The, there is no change, there is no specific findings in the draft order about landscaping except that the threshold of 15% is met because the applicant is not proposing to change the landscaping. And since there is no proposal for changing it, the landscaping is not under review with this application because it was previously approved four years ago with what's there. Rightly or wrongly, it may have been approved, but that was approved. You've got a copy of the aerial photo that shows the gravel parking area and, and the landscaped area. copy of the aerial photo that shows the gravel parking area and, and the landscaped area. There was the issue raised about system development charges. System development charges are irrelevant to the land use proceedings, they're never calculated and, and discussed, other than there is mention of them in the standard conditions of approval that are attached to every land use approval. But the, the, the calculation and collection of system development charges are not part of the land use process, that happens later, when they are applicable. Finally, there was comment about specific code requirements from the standard conditions of approval, stating that they were not addressed in the, in the draft order. They are addressed in the draft order, they are part of the standard conditions of approval that are part of every land use, uh, decision. That's why they are appended. So, so finally, um, do want to point out that, yes, there are provisions of the code that staff determined were not met by the site plan that was submitted, but we have provided to you specific conclusions for those, uh, and conditions of approval for modifications to the site plan, to require that they be approved. As I stated in my initial staff report, and as Wally has said in his remarks, you are the ones who have the final determination as to how you want to interpret the code, whether you want to, uh, have the architectural standards met by the structure that is placed there. Uh, it's been my interpretation, and, and again, someone asked about the, the determination from the county. When this application came in, we contacted the county as to whether a building permit would be needed. We got a, um, I don't know what to call it, a, a, I guess, a code interpretation, a written document from the, from the county regarding mobile food units, and when building permits are required or not, and it had a list of seven or eight things to check off, and our review of this proposal indicated that this was not a building as interpreted by Marion County Building Inspection, and we will get that into the council record, that I did not provide it as part of the packet, I'll have to go find it and, and get it into the file. And it was provided to the applicant, so the applicant knew, and as you heard testimony today, they had already, prior to getting site plan approval, in October, they had received, they had moved the unit onto the property, uh, had connected it to electricity, and as a result of, of looking at the county's checklist of what would determine whether it was a building or not, modified their electrical connection to have a, quote, "approved detachable plug," rather than hardwiring the building to, to the wiring. So that is, that is, was the basis for my interpretation, that all of the standards in the land use code regarding buildings were not applicable to this proposal. So it's not a matter that there's two different codes, but the land use code has certain standards that apply to buildings.
If it's not a building, it doesn't.
It was my interpretation that this was not a building, and therefore, they did not apply. The council is free to make an alternate interpretation, should you choose to. And if you do determine that this is a building, then those standards would apply, and will need to rewrite the findings and conclusions, and probably have some additional conditions of approval. And it will, if you make that determination, then there are standards in the land use code, and there are provisions in the CCNRs for the subdivision for the architectural design standards that would also come into play.
Okay. Is that it?
So that's it.
No.
Based on, on that, the decision you need to make tonight is to either, close the public hearing, and make a, make a, go into deliberations and make a decision, or keep the public hearing open, continue the public hearing for two weeks to allow additional testimony, or particularly if the applicant requests, as Wally had said, close the public hearing to, um, oral testimony, but leave the record open for additional written testimony to allow the applicant time to rebut the written testimony that was submitted tonight. Or, there's one other, I gotta get my staff report to find all of the options. Um, close the hearing, I guess that's it. You could close the hearing and, and continue your deliberations to another meeting. The city is under an obligation for your decision to be finalized no later than January 11, which would give us your next regularly scheduled meeting to, to get everything finalized, should you wish to.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone, any of the council want to continue this hearing? And if they do, then, otherwise, I'm going to close the hearing, and we'll go to deliberations.
Before you close the hearing, Mr. Mayor, uh, some, we should check with the applicant to see if they wanted the continuance based on the new material that was presented tonight.
Ms. Shamblin?
I don't, I feel like.
I'm sorry, she's.
No.
Said no.
Said no, okay. I didn't, yeah, couldn't see her. So we can go ahead and close the, close the hearing. You ready? Okay. Hearing's closed. Counsel deliberation. What do you folks want to do?
We want to discuss, we're ready for a motion?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we go with, uh, our planner's decision, including the amendments that required, uh, the paving in 2018, as the original agreement did. So with, with approval, and again, with the amendments.
Look at a three or two.
No. Approve the application with conditions adopting modifications to the draft order.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Number two in that list of.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve the application with conditions adopting modifications to the draft order. Okay? Any discussion?
Wally, did I understand the motion to be without any modifications to the?
With the modifications.
Okay, okay.
With conditions.
I'm starting to panic.
No, with the modifications that, uh.
With modifications. To the draft order. Okay? Other discussion, anything?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Dan, should that go through? Does that mean they come back again with their final revised site plan?
They don't need to do a site.
With your.
If, if you are to approve the draft order, as, I, I'm not quite sure how Councilor Glidewell intends for the draft order to be modified. I know we got advice from legal counsel that he feels that some of the findings need to be beefed up, to use a colloquialism. But as drafted, the, the order requires a revised site plan to be submitted.
Correct.
That, um, shows at least 60 feet of queuing space for the drive-through window, in addition to the vehicle being served, without blocking the driveway. And secondly, a revised site plan be submitted that shows the proposed location of on-site parking for a minimum of two vehicles. At least one of the spaces shall meet requirements for a handicap accessible parking space and be properly marked and signed. The parking area shall be paved with concrete or asphalt. The driveway lane for drive-through service shall be paved with asphalt or concrete. Due to the time of year of this decision, the paving may be postponed.